Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to the first Council Town Hall of 2025. A few things to note, we're going to do the Town Hall with the same format that we started with the previous council, which is I have received a bunch of note cards in all different categories, as well as some questions were submitted online. I'm just going to go through the categories and dole them out to the council. If other questions come up, there are several staff people around who, Deputy City Manager Jan Lambert's right there, and there's a few other in the corner who can also take your questions. A few things to note, I'm going to try and get to as many of these as possible. I was just doing a quick skim. Some of these are very long questions, so I might summarize. So if I don't read it word for word, please know that I'm still trying to get the gist, but I just want to make sure, I think we've got something like 50 questions already, and I'm sure there are more in the room. To my colleagues, I'll ask you to keep your questions, I mean, your answers brief, so that we can get to as many as possible. But if more than one folks want to weigh in on a question, just let me know and raise your hand. And the categories that I've received so far, just so everyone in the public knows, it's infrastructure, public safety, budget and economic development, schools, zoning, and other. All right, that, we're going to start with infrastructure. First question, and this one is from Fran. Recently, I read an article in Alex Now about the consideration of using Dash buses for high school students. If the state requires a sidearm camera on school buses, will Dash need to comply? And if that is a state requirement, perhaps the use of Dash buses should be tabled. Where, also, where would these funds come from to support such a change? And I'm going to start with Vice Mayor Bagley.
Yeah, thank you for following this topic. So a couple of things, there was a good session on the Joint City Schools Committee on Monday that is recorded and available on our website, where specifically this element of this proposal was discussed at length, and there was presentations from both ACPS and Dash about sort of safety and how it's handled and on the buses. So I would encourage anybody interested in this topic to watch that portion of the meeting. In, there are already youth riding our Dash buses, so I just, you know, generally speaking, I got a figure, which maybe I shouldn't quote just yet, but I asked this during our stockholder meeting the other night, you know, how many youth do we have on the bus? And so I have a figure, it is not zero, I can promise you. And so youth are already getting on and off our buses. With regard to it being a particular state requirement of a school bus, I'm not going to speak to that, that's part of what the Joint City Schools Committee is doing, but recognize, to the extent we're not turning Dash buses into school buses, what we are proposing is, would it be an economic gain? Would it be an efficiency? Would it be a reliable efficiency? Are there efficiencies and improvements to be gained by having high school age students only using Dash in lieu of high school specific yellow bus routes? So this is about first examining, and to the point of the person asking the question, are there economic efficiencies to be gained here? The point is not to spend more money, the driving impetus for this in many ways is, we have an excellent, robust, successful bus network in our city, which many youth already use. Can we get more of them onto those buses and in doing so eliminate duplicity, you know, duplicity in our network and potentially reallocate funds that ACPS uses for buses into other educational purposes? I'll pause there just with an eye to try and keep answers short and if that's responsive.
Sure. And what I will just say on this is, the City Schools Committee is examining this issue as a result of a memo that was put forth by the Vice Mayor and Councilman El Nubi. There have been two presentations to date. The first presentation focused on the current state of transportation in our city for young people, the second one was on safety, the third will focus on operations and cost. We are also collecting questions, I know we've received questions from all members of the council, a few members of school board, from PTAC, as well as from the high school PTA. At the end of May, recommendations will be presented to both bodies. Any decision about how we move forward would then also need to go through a community engagement process. All right, next topic, public safety. What, and this question is from Kylie. What is going to be done about rising homeless, about the rising homelessness issue and crime? Both of these issues are related and threaten the safety of taxpaying citizens who live in Alexandria, but additionally, they threaten tourism and our economic development. And I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Chapman.
So, so the city's going to need to do a number of things, just like any locality that is facing some of these issues. One of the things that we continue to make sure that we're doing is building affordable housing, but also transitional housing. Partnering with a number of nonprofit developers, we are going to have to have opportunities for that. I think we are also calling on the state and a number of localities are as well to help provide the funding for additional transitional housing, especially in the economy that we are seeing, knowing that we are probably going to have more people that are losing job opportunities and thereby having some housing insecurity. Not only our jurisdiction, but neighboring jurisdictions are going to need to do that type of work. Let me see the rest of the question, I know there was another piece to it. So I think, I think one of the other issues that was raised here in terms of the, kind of the effect on tourism in a way, I think one of the things that we are going to have to do is frankly try to find what those solutions are to house people and provide that opportunity for them. I know that's a challenging thing, and I know that with the economy being what it is, it's going to be tough, but I think that is the push for all these localities. Whether, whether or not we're able to do it, obviously, is the issue, but that has to be the goal.
Thank you. We're going to go to budget and economic development. This question is from Alex. Every week, council hears requests from small businesses and home builders who can't complete their projects without exceptions to our expensive parking mandates. Several other Virginia cities have removed their mandates in an effort to build more homes and support local businesses. Newport News, Richmond, Roanoke, and Charlottesville. Has Alexandria considered this? And I'm going to go to Councilman McPike, and Councilman Chapman makes a good point, some of these are long, so I'll pass you your question too.
No, I appreciate, all right, great. I appreciate the question. This is a topic, it came up to a degree in our zoning for housing discussions as we talked about reducing required parking spaces along, for housing being built in our transit opportunity zones, like our high volume transit zones, and we decided to do that as a city. We took that step. We haven't taken the step that Richmond and other localities around Virginia have of sort of setting aside the notion of parking requirements altogether. If you look at the cities that have done this, it's not that new developments, new buildings, new storefronts don't include parking, it's that they include the parking that their analysis of the market, of the customers that they are going to attract, if their business, of the people they expect to live there, if they are a housing facility, are going to want and going to need. And I do think there's a lot of value to letting the market determine what sort of parking allocation is needed at each building dependent upon its location, its type. We approved last month at the council, at the council meeting, some new housing on King Street, which is right there at the heart of our transit system with multiple Dash lines and easy access to metro, and that housing was approved without a requirement that it provide specific off-street parking for the residents who will live there, because we think that the kind of housing that they're building, they come to us and they say, this is going to be housing that's going to attract a sort of customer that's going to want that more urban, less car-dependent, less, you know, parking requiring kind of customer. So I do think that this is a conversation we should be having as a city, it's not something we should do lightly. I actually had conversations with some other members of the council about bringing forward this topic to be considered by our staff with recommendations to come back to us. I think you'll see us having this discussion on the council, but also with the public in the coming months about what do we really need? And are we inhibiting our ability to build the housing we desperately need in this housing crisis of providing the housing that we need for people who want to live a greener, more transit-oriented style of life in our city? I think that we can do more, and I look forward to having that conversation in the months to come.
Councilman Chapman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also look forward to that conversation, and I think for me, it's really, if we go down that road, we need to be able to show you, the residents, kind of what that replacement, replacement value is. When we've made adjustments to parking minimums, we haven't been able to do that. We haven't shown that this particular housing is affordable now because they've been able to decrease, or there's an increase in public art, or an increase in public infrastructure, or things like that. And so I think we need to be able to speak directly to that, so folks can see that we're not just kind of, as people like to say, giving something to the developer, we're actually getting something for the benefit of the public as we do that.
All right, next category is schools, and a question about what is being done about the lack of safety and security at ACPS, particularly the King Street High School? And I'm going to send this question to Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of course, you know, we have, you know, our, our school is overcrowded, our high school is overcrowded. They are looking for ways at all, ACPS and the city are looking for ways at all times to work together to make sure that our kids are as safe as possible in our schools, and as well working with APD, APD, and also, you know, with the school resource officers that are within the school. It is, it is critical that we keep, you know, safety should be a priority, above, you know, right up there with them getting the education they need, it is important that they are safe. I know ACPS is looking at various security companies each and every year to make sure, and evaluating the security companies that they have. They do keep us updated through our city schools subcommittee, and, you know, moving forward, it's going to always be our priority that we maintain that. They are looking at, you know, which has become a safety issue this year with the two campuses, with the kids walking back and forth, and making sure that kids remain on one campus versus going back and forth and potentially, you know, being in a traffic accident. So all of these things are looked at on a consistent basis, and will be, continue to do that.
Councilman Chapman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In their budget this year, they've added, actually, last year they added additional staff, security staff to ACHS, and they're looking to keep that, that same level as well. We believe, and I think we just got the numbers back from the last, maybe quarter number two, that incidents have decreased at the high school, so for that quarter. And so I think there's something there, and so hopefully keeping the same level of support helps.
And I will, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, one more thing. And they did ask for additional security guards this year, that in the budget as well, that, that is still being looked at through the budget process. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Councilwoman El Nubi. I do want to keep people mindful, we're only on like five questions, and there's a lot more to go, and there's more coming in. So, Councilwoman El Nubi.
I'll be brief, but also there's, we need to have a conversation about being proactive, understanding why these events are happening at our schools, what are we doing to address the root cause of these behaviors, whether inside the schools or outside the schools? From a council perspective, the programs that we put together that we have in this year's budget, that we worked really hard not to cut in this year's budget, that address housing insecurity, that address food insecurity, these are important things to think about as we see this kind of violence, and to make sure that we're funding and we're looking at how we solve these problems in a proactive way, not just being reactive. Of course, there's a reactive piece to it, which is the security piece, but that piece, the proactive piece, also very important. Also addressing mental health, psychologists in the schools, but also from the city side, mental health in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next bucket, zoning. This question is from Scott. Why is it a good use of limited financial resources for us to use taxpayer dollars for an outside law firm to issue subpoenas for citizens? Tenth Amendment right to, oh, first, what is this? First Amendment right to free speech. So I assume this is related to zoning for housing, given that this is active litigation, I don't think it's appropriate for the council to comment. I do however not just want to leave this here, so typically we don't phone a friend, but if the city attorney wants to come up, and yeah, we can give you one of these mics if you want to come up and just speak to anything that you're able to share about how we do litigation or subpoenas.
Can I speak to the budget part of the question? And just, no, okay, that's fine.
Thank you very much for the question. Generally speaking, the city is not going to comment on pending litigation, however, because of the, whether it's a misunderstanding or mischaracterization of what the city is doing right now as it's engaged in the zoning for housing litigation, I do want to address it. We are a litigant, just like any other litigant, we are entitled to seek discovery, we are entitled to avail ourselves of the discovery process, and in that, there are instances where it is, we are entitled to subpoena non-parties to the, to the case. And so in this particular instance, the parties that have been subpoenaed were identified as third-party witnesses under oath by the plaintiffs. And so therefore, that is why we've issued the subpoenas, and we are proceeding with the case, and we will have no further comment.
Thank you. Next bucket is other. This question comes from Cedar. What are you doing to protect Alexandria from the administration in the White House? Many federal workers are fired, contracts were cut, and the federal government is withdrawing up to millions of dollars in grant funding for several COVID-related programs operated by the Virginia Department of Health. So much so quickly is threatening every part of our lives, what is your plan? And I'm going to send this to Councilman Aguirre.
So in my opinion, I feel that the city has positioned itself well to try and adapt and pivot, given what's going on with these circumstances. Conversation started back in November. You know, I'm not going to express everything that was being said, because we don't want to put our game plan out there the way 2025, Project 2025 was put out there. Conversations with our nonprofits, conversations internally with the city, knowing where federal dollars are coming from. Of course, we can't replace federal money. You know, the vast amount is just too high, and when it comes to our federal workers, we have been very supportive. We have our website up inviting folks to be able to take a look, not just for jobs, but also, as a federal worker, you might never have thought of the safety net, you know, that the city provides, and so making sure that folks are aware for food security, for rental assistance, for health needs, right? We have a great federally qualified health clinic, yes, I know federal is in the name of it, and it does receive federal dollars, but while they're still active, we have a robust safety net system set up to support our federal workers. Other programs that are going to be impacted, we're going to try and replace that with some city services or city staff as much as possible. Again, only so much can be done at the local level. This is why the state elections are so important this year, we need the state to be able to support us in what we're doing. Currently, the state also has a subcommittee that's looking at funding for what's potentially coming down the pike, because if people have savings in the next three to six months, that savings might be completely taken out. So we are doing everything that we can within our power and authority to make sure that we're supporting not just our federal workers, but also our nonprofits and our immigrant community, because there's a lot of fear that is being put out there that we are pushing, not only pushing back on, but also making sure that individuals know what their civil liberties and their civil rights are.
Okay, thank you. We're back around to the, oh, sorry, Councilman McPike.
I just wanted to add to that answer, that if you go to alexandria.gov/federalworkers, there's, that's sort of the clearinghouse for all the efforts that we're putting in place to help federal workers that Councilman Aguirre mentioned.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Aguirre.
I forgot, one super important thing too, the city along with Fairfax County, Arlington, and Falls Church helped to joint host a Federal Resource Fair with Congressman Don Byer in the 8th District. It was held at a high school in Arlington, just up the street from King Street, and, you know, there was over, what, 800 people showed up or something?
Yep.
And we were trying to make sure that we were connecting them with as many services as possible, so we are actively out there trying to do things to connect people with the services that they may need.
Thank you, and just to give you, I think it's for the audience, a sense of scale, our understanding is that almost 900 people showed up to that event, 400 of them went directly to the Alexandria tables, seeking resources for jobs, food assistance, and housing assistance as well. There will be, I think Congressman Byer is trying to do another one on May 3rd, and the goal is to try and have that one here in Alexandria, so we're working with ACPS on a location. All right, we're back around to infrastructure. This one's from James. Is there a plan for information to be made available to the public concerning the development of the complex where the Landmark Mall used to be? As well as the development of the large complex nearby on Stevenson Street? We have heard rumors of a hospital complex with a helicopter pad to be planned at Landmark Site, but where can we get information? And I'm going to send this one to Abdell, uh, sorry, Councilwoman El Nubi.
Thank you for the question. So I am looking at our website right now, and there are, usually we have pages for developments like these where you can get information about what's happening and what stage we're in, and we usually, when there are big developments that happen in big projects, the city would put out press releases and things like that. If you have specific questions about specific things, feel free to reach out to us via the 311 system, and you're always going to get an answer, whether from a city staff member or from us as council members. The landmark development is a pretty exciting development, it's really going to revitalize the West End, and I live not too far from there, so I'm excited about it. And the other development on Stevenson, I personally don't know much of it about it, because that was just, that was approved like about three years ago, so I will yield to some of my colleagues to talk about the plans for that.
I'm going to send it to Vice Mayor Bagley. I thought you were going to say, yes, there is a hospital.
I mean, I think it was within his answer, but I do just want to, if there's any confusion, there is absolutely going to be a hospital, it's going to be a world-class hospital with a helicopter pad, and if you're particularly interested in the, in the hospital piece, Enova, not that we don't have our own pages, but enova.org/landmark has a really great breakdown, and it actually includes like the CDD, the DSUP, so they're doing a thorough analysis from their side as well. So to the extent the question is, what's going there? Half of the parcel through a long partnership and effort with the city will be the Enova Hospital, the other half will be primarily housing with retail and commercial spaces and a significant green space. I want to emphasize that, even though I know it's not the thrust of the question, but we get a lot of questions and interactions about green space in the city and loss of space. We are getting back acres of green space and tree canopy, because Landmark Mall, it was a concrete, you know, wasteland essentially of, you know, buildings and parking, and it will have park space, green space when it's redeveloped. In terms of Stevenson, what I'd like to do, thank you for having your name on the question, if the mayor can pass it to me, Abdell and I will follow up with you with a link to the project.
Um, Councilman Aguirre.
I was just going to add, I don't typically push the search engine on the website, because it's not always great, but I punched in landmark in the search sign, if you go to the fifth item down, that's the link directly to the project page.
Thank you. All right, public safety. This question is from Paul. Why does the city allow homeless individuals to beg on the streets of Alexandria? And I'm going to go to Councilman Aguirre.
There isn't really a law to say that you can't. The law in Virginia is basically that you have to keep moving. I'm going to phone a friend, Councilman McPike looks like he's got a hand up.
So I think this question is regarding change that we made a couple of years ago. We had some laws on our books that said that you couldn't be within certain distances of ATM machines or certain locations and ask people for money. And the issue that we had there was that is a law that says that if you're standing in a certain place and you're talking to passersby, asking them what the weather is, asking them what the score is in the Nats game, that's fine, but if you're asking them for money, that is not. That is content-based language rules, and that is a risk of running afoul of the First Amendment. And so we adjusted our laws to reflect the fact that people have a First Amendment right if they can legally be in a place to talk about things. You can't make content-based discrimination, it's the same as when the city wanted to get rid of, or many councils ago, wanted to address commercial signs in medians or political signs in medians, they couldn't just say, only this kind of sign can't be there, only this kind of sign can't be there. They had to say, no signs can be in the medians, because you cannot base these rules on the content of the speech that is occurring. Regarding harassing behavior, behavior that is threatening or creates a sense of unease or unsafety, those are still things that you can, you know, that can be actionable by the police, you can seek help for that, nobody can harass you. But simply saying, you know, hey, can I have five bucks, rather than, hey, can you tell me what the score is of the Nats game? That gets into content-based areas that we can't really be policing. So the behavior is what we can address, it's not the actual content of the language.
Okay, and I just wanted to note for the public, as we get new questions, I'm just putting them at the bottom out of fairness. I think that, that we had those from online, those in the rooms who were here first, and then, so I'm just kind of get to them, but I just want you to know, I'm not mixing them up, I'm just putting them right at the bottom, and we will keep going through. Next category, budget and economic development. This question's from Jana. What is council's process for soliciting meaningful public comment on its annual budget, including taking to account the needs of its diverse, it says jurisdictions, but I would also maybe diverse people? Councilwoman Green.
I think we are all actively meeting with people on the budget, there is our monthly budget meeting. You can always put in questions directly to us or 311, but we are always actively soliciting, you know, anyone that wants to comment on the budget. There's many active ways that you can do that, specifically on, on our website and at each of our, our meetings.
Yeah, and you can, you can come to any of our public hearings. We have another public hearing coming up on the, our ad delete public hearings, that's one, we have a budget comment page on the website too, that you can submit, submit at any time. Yes, I saw two hands, so Councilman McPike and then Councilman Aguirre.
And when you come to our budget public hearings, we had one for comments about the budget specifically a while, a few weeks ago, we have one coming up about ad deletes and the tax rate. Translation services are available at those events, so that we can hear from folks who may not otherwise, you know, speak English, because we want to hear from the voices of everybody in Alexandria. Also, one of the reasons we're having a town hall this month in, in this part of the city is to have an opportunity for people to ask us questions about the budget, and to hear from folks who may not make it all the way over to Old Town on a Saturday morning to talk to us at our normal public hearings.
So just to tack on to that, there's a wide array of ways to be able to engage. You could come in person, like was said, for a public hearing, you could actually come in person to City Hall, to the clerk's office, you could call the clerk's office and leave a message or talk directly with someone, they will write it down, pass it on to the council, you could send a physical letter, you could send an email, you could send a tweet, you know, Alex311, and our staff is monitoring social media, so we can take those in. The city manager has had pop-ups across the city, so there's a wide variety of ways, and as Councilman McPike mentioned, we have language capabilities as well, so it doesn't matter what language you speak, we will be able to interact with you. And the last thing I'd mention is that, uh, I just lost it. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Green, do you still want to get back in there? Okay. And I will just say, I don't mean to put her on the spot, but if our city clerk could just do a little wave in the back, that's Gloria, and she's a great person to speak to if you have questions about how to sign up for an upcoming meeting. All right, moving to schools, this question is from Alan. What actions are going to improve coordination and collaboration between the city council and the school board? And I'm going to go to Councilman El Nubi.
So I think what really can improve how we work together is working together on joint initiatives, like the Dash Bus Initiative that was mentioned earlier, like a new middle school, that's a huge challenge, and no one body can solve it on its own, because each body has information and tools and expertise that the other body doesn't have. And once we start doing that and gaining small wins, we can then gain big wins, but we need to see that we're capable of doing that, we're capable of working together and solving problems together. So if we do that, I think that will improve. Of course, communication, obviously we have to communicate, that, that is very important. We have the City Schools Subcommittee, it meets all the time. So the mayor actually started something new this year, which the Subcommittee takes on a topic every few months and works on it, and like was said, the Dash was the first one they took on to try to work on together, and then take another issue and work on it, take another issue and work on it. So it's not just a committee where they meet and just talk, they're actually solving issues, and then both bodies are informed and up to date on what's, what's happening. I'll add one thing on the Dash issue that was mentioned earlier, the Dash exploration. ACPS already does not provide transportation to high school students who live within a mile and a half radius from the school, unless they don't have a safe walking route to school. So there are already high school students that don't have a school bus, and their only option may be to take Dash. option may be to take Dash. So students are already taking Dash safely. Dash was free for students before it was free for the public. So what we're talking about here is exploring, expanding that, exploring more students riding Dash and not having a school bus option. Let's say if they live right next to a Dash Bus route that can take them to school right away. And we're not also, the Vice Mayor mentioned it earlier, we're not talking about using Dash exclusively for student. No, we're just talking about students riding Dash more and less school buses. Imagine how less school buses can benefit our environment, benefit our street, improve traffic, the wear and tear on our roads. So that's where this idea is coming from. That's what this idea is about.
Green.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Alan, it's a, that's a great question. And when working with two complex bodies, both sides have to be open to doing that and we are making strides in making sure that happened. We both met for a retreat earlier, a couple of months ago and, you know, we're, we're putting forth the best effort to make sure that going forward that we can collaborate better. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move, okay. Councilman Pike, Councilman Aguirre.
I just want to put the, the bus conversation in kind of broader context. As we look at the fact that we are, you know, very fiscally strained in the city, we have a lot of demands upon our resources. The council is hoping that we can work with the school board to find areas of overlap, services that we're both providing, services that might be plug and play between our two entities so that the city can take on more of that work, like having students riding Dash Buses instead of school buses, to free up resources that the schools can instead put directly into the classrooms, put into teacher pay and their other educationally-focused priorities. So the, I think the position that we're coming to this conversation with, from is what are the things that the city is doing and the schools are doing that we can do more efficiently if we combine them so that the schools can take the budget that they're given every year and put it most effectively to work in the classrooms?
Brief, sharing, answering questions and sharing information slash data in a timely fashion.
Okay, zoning. I'm going to try and find the question, but just give you the context and I'm going to send this to you, Councilman McPike. It's from Julie. It says, given your approval of new zoning rules, how do you preserve a 70-year-old neighborhood when you've allowed short-term rentals with owners who are not required to live at least part-time in the houses or two buildings FAR larger than existing houses with more people and less land? Increasing values are pushing seniors out who would like to age at home. I've attended your senior in Eco-City educational programs. I also want you to expound on the city's goals for mixed growth. So I think it's both a question around short-term rentals, but then aging in place and larger around growth and development. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you very much. Regarding short-term rentals until, well, actually technically still today, Alexandria has been the Wild West for short-term rentals. Unlike most of our neighboring and comparative jurisdictions, we did not have rules that applied to these uses of housing, which are legitimate and legal under state law. If you own your house or you're, you know, you have a mortgage on the house, you can rent out a room, you can use it as an Airbnb. What we've done recently in the council is we put in place some regulations regarding that. We've said that if you are offering an Airbnb in Alexandria, that you're going to have to provide your guests information about our noise ordinances, our quiet hours, our trash pickup, information like that. You're going to have to have an agent on call who can respond to neighborhood concerns regarding that facility, including one-hour responses on things like noise complaints or safety issues. You're going to have to put in place, you know, systems for handling these things. You're going to be limited in terms of the parking, number of cars you can have. We've capped the number of residents you can have and you can't have parties in our residential zones. You can't create a party house in the middle of one of our neighborhoods. These are sort of steps that we've taken as a council to try to recognize that Airbnbs are an important part of how people come and visit Alexandria, but they're also things that exist in our neighborhoods in many cases, in commercial districts and others, and we want to make sure that the impact of them is not outweighing the benefits of the city at large gathers from them. In terms of houses, large houses or houses with ADUs, if you have a home with an ADU, you can have the ADU be an Airbnb and the home be an Airbnb, but not at the same time. You cannot rent them out at the same time under our new ordinance, which goes to affect, ADUs, auxiliary dwelling unit. It's a small building added to a lot, like, you know, sometimes they're called granny flats, you know, little apartment or residence on the back of your house that your in-laws or someone else can live in. When I grew up as a kid in Texas, my best friend's house had a apartment above the garage and a member of the Dallas Symphony Orchestra actually lived there and it was actually very nice hearing him play the viola. So let's see here. Regarding seniors and increasing home values, last year we expanded a program that we have in the city which allows seniors on fixed incomes with limited resources to be exempted from certain percentages of their property tax, all the way up to 100% of the property tax being forgiven. And beyond that, there's a program for seniors who meet slightly looser criteria to have the property taxes deferred until there's a point where the senior does not need the house anymore and is being transferred and those taxes can then be paid. Details of that are available on our city's tax website. I think this is a program that we allowed to sort of stay set in stone for too long and I was really happy to help lead my colleagues in expanding that tax forgiveness for seniors on fixed and lower incomes last year. And it's something that I think we need to keep an eye on because housing prices, sorry, housing values do continue to increase in the city and we don't want that fact to push people who want to stay in Alexandria to, you know, not be able to. I would say that since this question touched on zoning, one of the reasons that we made some of the changes in the zoning for housing package a year and a half ago was to create a wider variety of housing options in our city so that if you are someone who is aging in Alexandria, loves your community, but you, you know, your house is becoming unaffordable or unmanageable because of the size, because you don't have kids living at home anymore, there should be housing options of a size and scale that you could move into if you'd like to, that keep you in your community, keep you in your neighborhood and allow you to continue to be a part of this wonderful community we call Alexandria.
Vice Mayor Bagley.
I just want to add two quick data points. If you're new to sort of observing this, we had a long public hearing on our February 25th docket, if anybody again wants to go back and watch that, but two quick data points. Short-term rentals represent less than 1% of our housing stock in the city. It was 0.8 of our 80,000 housing units, while at the same time it represented 19% of our transit occupancy tax. So what we collect from sort of that like hotel-type stay. So just to put a little context on that, there are communities around the country who absolutely are seeing significant portions of their stock going to this, but, but we are not yet.
Okay, we're back to other. This question's from Frank. When, when do you plan to remove the LGBT crosswalk in front of City Hall and put it back to its original form or paint American flags there to help celebrate the 250th anniversary of America? After the past six years, it's time to unite the community instead of dividing it. Councilman Chapman.
Yeah, we're, we don't have any plans to change what we've done. To the person's question, in celebration of the 250th, there are a whole host of activities and events that are going to happen. For those who are familiar with rolling through Old Town, you know that usually probably around this time, there's a big giant American flag sitting on the front of the face of the building. And so we traditionally have kind of the patriotic symbolism that folks might be looking for on the City Hall building. But, you know, the latest additions, the crosswalk in particular that we've added, helps us remember that there are all types of people that have helped to build our city. Some folks, maybe this person, but other folks as well in, in our nation are starting to forget that. And so as we do different things to showcase, highlight, or talk about different communities, different types of people that are contributing to the growth of this country, I don't see why we should go backwards in that. There's nothing wrong with highlighting various people that have helped contribute to the history of this country.
Yeah, so to be very clear, we're not removing the crosswalk. The next question, so we're back to, we're back to infrastructure and this question is from Betsy. What is going to happen to the torpedo factory? Why are there so many studios that have been turned into event spaces and offices? And is the new governing entity going to do anything about artists not keeping their hours? Vice Mayor Bagley. There's three there.
Thank you for the question and for your support of the torpedo factory. So the current, we, I, I, I'm always kind of a little hesitant to speak to the, the absolute specifics of the number of studios, but what I can tell you is that, that we have remained consistent in the number of studios through our juring process over the last three years. We have remained, remain consistent in our commitment to sort of keeping that an artist-focused space and I hope I'm not out of school and Jim, start waving your hands wildly if I mention something about the leases. Okay. We have recently agreed and announced that we're going to extend the leases a year to all the current artists in the building because we, we don't want to be jurying and to be changing things while we are in the middle of pursuing our new governing entity. So that has been shared with the artists. So what that means is that nobody's lease ends this year. The earliest anybody's lease will end is next September 2026. And to address the, the back part of the question about the new governing entity, we aren't even waiting for the new governing entity to address hours being kept. Our city staff is actively working on, on that. I mean, I want to, something I hear from sort of both sides on this is there are artists who feel very strongly that they should not be checking in and checking out and sort of in a monitoring way. And there are artists who feel very strongly that, you know, everybody needs to check in and check out and be present. So we're balancing that, but, but I think I have expressed and I think staff is working towards a solution that does attempt to monitor hours. I think there is a growing sense of a renewed sort of spirit in the factory, for what it's worth, between old artist and new, and a renewed commitment that we all do need to be there and part of that might be a checking in or a fobbing system or something. So I'm certainly committed to that. I don't want to speak to my colleagues, but I think that should be in place even before the new governing entity.
I'm going to do two more infrastructure, just because this is a very big category and I don't know if we're going to get to all of them. I'm also going to try and read, I'll pass you all of the context, but I'm going to just try and do the question. What will the city do both on its own or through its influence of regional organizations like the COG to ensure that bike infrastructure is reliable and usable? And I'm going to send this to Councilman El Newby. I know. Sorry to give it to, you have attached a little bike on your arm.
So what, what could happen is, one, first thing that comes to mind is make sure our bike trails and bike lanes are connected with our jurisdictions around us. So that's what we can do collectively. Look for funding opportunities to increase bike lanes and increase street safety in general, wherever there is opportunities for grants or whatever we can do together to think about creative solutions where we can save money so we can find money to fund those, those bike lanes and those, those efforts. So that's what comes to mind right away. Oh, and then like someone's talking about ice, the, you know, ice over, ice over the bike lanes and whatnot. So we also need to make sure that, you know, we are addressing safety issues directly right away. So, but here's the thing, especially when, I don't know when this happened, the ice that, the ice that is being mentioned here, but we had a couple of big snowstorms, three probably, and there is a system that we have that we start addressing by categories. So we start addressing main routes first and then we start addressing like sidewalks and then like areas around schools because we want to get life back to normal right away. So, so I know, and I know I received some emails from residents about some bike lanes and some curb cuts that were not cleaned right away because usually like I said, there's a delay, there's like a 48, 72-hour delay to do that. But when we receive those reports, we try to address them right away. And honestly, staff has been amazing. When I forwarded those emails to them, they, they, they took care of them, but also encouraged us to let residents know to report these spots that may have gotten missed, so.
Thank you. And I will say, I think this came up hearing ice, that makes me think about our snow removal plans and processes. I know Vice Mayor Bagley raised this when we were doing a debrief and one of the things we are looking at is how do we have an intentional plan for our bike lanes, recognizing we still need to do the primary and secondary streets first, but this is critical infrastructure that we've invested in and it can't be used if we're just pushing all of the snow into the bike lane. Councilman Aguirre, this one's coming to you. How difficult would it be to build a teen wellness center and recreation center at Ewald Park?
Oh, wow, that's a, that's a great question. So I actually, I actually put in a budget memo specifically around Ewald Park and what do it take to create a small structure? Now, when you're talking about a teen wellness center, there's very specific specifications, specific specifications that, that the building would need. So I don't know if that's something that we could achieve on the first go-around. Personally, I would like to see the investment made to be able to put a small building there and then potentially grow it as we have more money freed up in the future, whether in the CIP or if we could get grant money to do it. I'm, I'm, I'm all in for that. I love that idea. You know, Ewald Park is located off of the Route 30, which is the second highest-used Dash Route in the city. It is in a good location. We are looking to change the park overall to make it more welcoming. We've had some issues with vagrancy and crime because, and frankly, I've had some students tell me at one of the pop-ups, they don't feel safe playing basketball there. They don't feel safe using the rest of the park, so we want to make sure that we change that. We want to activate this location and we need places for our teenagers to be able to just hang out and be teenagers. And if we could create a safe space for that, I am all for it. Hence, that's why I put in that budget memo and hopefully I can convince my colleagues to put a little bit of investment. It's only $3 million for the CIP. Doesn't have to, have to happen right now, but you know, over time, I think we might be able to make that happen.
Okay. Next question, and I'm going to come to you, Councilwoman Green. City council continues to say that it will grow the business revenue, but that is not happening. Isn't it time to recognize that the effort to find a major business contributor is not working?
Well, I think we should never say never. It is always important to make sure that we are looking at every avenue to bring in additional business revenue. Quite frankly, we're going to be in a very serious situation if we don't figure this out, which is why we're, we're doing the Economic Development Summit on May 8th. We hope that you all will contribute by doing, taking the survey and participating in it on that with us. There are things that are coming down the pipeline that we are currently looking at and will always be looking at in the future. It's important to protect and provide resources for the businesses that we do have so they can continue to survive and thrive, but we have to continue to look at ways to diversify our tax base in order to basically, you know, make sure that we're doing what is right for the future and for future Alexandrians. So no, I don't think we should give up looking for something that is, you know, a big. I think we should look at all things to always be able to continue to have ways to increase our business revenue.
This one, I'm going to send to Councilman McPike. There's, I'm just going to say the question, but there is a lot of other context here. But can council increase the schools' allocation so that the schools can be better staff while still being able to provide an increase in salary that is being offered to all Alexandria City employees? I'll give you a second.
You know, the schools is the largest part of the Alexandria City budget. It's over $300 million and hundreds of millions of dollars of CIP spending over the next 10 years as well. This year in our budget, sort of guidance, the city manager was trying to cap overall spending increases across the city at 2%. spending increases across the city at 2%, while also asking every department to identify 1% in cuts, and actually sort of held the line in our Parks Department, in our Police Department, in our Fire Department. Where we went above that in terms of the rate of growth was in the city manager's recommended budget for the schools. The operating expenses for the schools is rising at a higher rate in the manager's proposed budget than it is for any other department or agency in the city, because we recognize that this is an important and essential area of investment. It's also, when you factor in all the other services the city provides to young people, our out-of-school time programs, our health programs, a lot of our nutritional and health supports go to young people in our city. The city is investing very deeply in our young people, because we do want to give them everything they need to go out into the world and have the best future possible. We are in the process of the budget right now. The budget is in the council's hands. We are looking at the document backwards and forwards, having weekly meetings about it. As a council, we are talking about things we want to change or not change. And there is always a desire to do more for the young people in our city. We are facing a really difficult fiscal situation in Alexandria right now. If you watched our last council meeting, and I'm sure everyone spends two hours every other Tuesday watching the live streams of the council meetings, because they're such scintillating entertainment, we had an update from the Metropolitan Council of Governments. And in that update, it was detailed what the proposed personnel cuts by the Trump administration could do to our local economy. Restaurant tours in this region, 40% of them think they're going to be closed within a year. If the cuts that Trump and Musk are talking about occur to federal workforce, Alexandria's unemployment rate will be around 10%. This is a year where we, as a council, realize that there's a lot of chaos and uncertainty and malevolence impacting people who live here in our community, coming from the federal government with no help from the state government. So we need to be a rock of stability, continue to provide the services that people rely upon. So we are constraining ourselves in terms of things like tax increases this year, to be that rock of stability. That gives us less flexibility when it comes to things like education, but I note that, again, the manager went beyond on the schools' budget what he did on the other departmental budgets, and we, as a council, are looking at other options right now. We have until Thursday to figure out what amendments we want to put in into the budget. So this is obviously an issue that we're talking to voters a lot about, we're hearing from folks, and we're, we're talking to each other about it.
Thank you. So I'm going to stay on schools for a second. Actually, the five that just came in were all on the same topic. I think Councilman McPike has given a sense of kind of the overall budget, but I'm just going to throw these out there, and then any council person who wants to respond can. The first one is, there are 13, what is this? There are 1,300-plus students receiving special education services at ACPS. Will you commit to funding at least one of the new special, one of the new special education teachers in the budget? Another is, will you commit to any fund saved from using dash buses? Will it commit that it goes to ACPS? Another is, teachers in neighboring jurisdictions are getting up to 8% MRA. In other places, how can we attract the best teachers to Alexandria when even their 1% isn't guaranteed? And ACPS requested funding increases in security guards, and it's currently not allocated. Will the ACPS allocation be increased? And then the last one, can you confirm if there's an $80 million fund balance in the city? And if so, can these be used for the school board? So essentially, and I'm happy to pass these out, but I think while we're on the school budget, we should just take all the school budget. Councilman El Newby.
Thank you. So the comment I was going to make on the question before, but slightly related to this, so our teachers, their salary is very competitive right now. Even if we're not able to do this, collective bargaining, which is coming down, and is going to be a, a large financial lift for the city, is going to make them even more competitive. So salary, even if we don't, aren't able to do the increase this year, we will still be competitive, and we will continue to be competitive once we get collective bargaining done. When it comes to the security guards, I'm not in favor of putting the security guards in elementary schools. I've always said that we've needed more security guards at the high school.
Thank you. And I think I passed them out, so we're going to go Councilman Chapman, Vice Mayor Bagley, Councilman Aguirre, Councilman El Newby.
Sure. So right there with Councilman Aguirre, around the security guards in elementary schools, I think one of the things that we used to have was a kind of a liaison program with APD for our elementary schools, particularly our teachers and our administrators, so that they had somebody that they could reach out to around kind of safety concerns. And so improving that communication, I think, could help. From a, an overall kind of budgeting perspective, one of the things I would want folks to mention, and you'll see this, this conversation grow hopefully over the next year, is really leaning on the state government to step up to the plate around educational funding, especially teacher pay. We do not rank as a state in a very good place as it relates to teacher pay. And so that means not just Alexandria, but the rest of the state is struggling to retain quality teachers. And it's not necessarily losing them to other neighboring states. Of course, we have to, we have different competition in the metro DC region, but it's actually losing people from the industry and that altogether, because they don't feel that they're being paid well. And so we need the state to step up. You know, the state came out last year with a billion-dollar-plus surplus, and a less-than-appropriate amount from that surplus ended up going back into education. That says something. That says that the folks at the state are not prioritizing the challenges around education in the way that they need to. As many of you know, Alexandria pulls a lot less state funding for education, and we have similar problems than other, as well as other jurisdictions in the state. And so teacher pay being one of them is one of the issues that needs to change. I think there's going to continue to be challenges to what we can do locally, but we need a partner in the state level that's going to be able to adequately, especially when they have extra dollars, give that money to education across the state.
I think my colleague has already addressed the, the pay issue, and we do have collective bargaining coming up, and I think we're sort of positioning our, our budget to absorb, you know, what is, what we've already seen through police, fire, and technical administrative are significant impacts to our overall budget and to dedicating parts of our budget. I apologize. What I've been sitting here trying to flip through is, within our budget was a list of positions that the city side, you know, that various departments said, this would be a useful position, but it is not being funded in this budget. The only two I could come up with off the top of my head, I know that there were two within tests, and one of which involved, you know, signage and, and route coordination and some, some of the, some of the conversations about safety. What's that?
Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department, good example. There are two positions that are being, you know, not funded in the sheriff's department. So I'm not, I'm not, you know, belittling or diminishing at all the current positions that are potentially not funded from the superintendent or the school board's budget. But for the, for the general public, I want to express this is not a, a line only being held to the schools. This is a city-wide, we cut over $6 million from this budget, we've cut over $30 million over the last five budgets, and so, and that's, that's citywide. So, so there is some recognition that there are departments everywhere that are seeing either new positions not created, or, to the sheriff examples, positions that are existing that are being eliminated.
So I grabbed the question regarding the fund balance. It is true, the city has a fund balance. Every locality in Virginia is required to have a fund balance, and these are dollars that collect over time. And it's important to understand what these dollars do. First of all, we have a policy that a certain percentage of, you know, the city's revenue will be, you know, represented in a fund balance. If you think about it, it's like the emergency latch-ditch rainy day fund. It's a fund balance that allows us to be liquid at times when we might be moving money around. But also, it's just money that's sitting in an account in some ways, or in a series of accounts. So it can't be used except for a one-time expense. You can't pay a salary out of fund balance, because those fund balance dollars don't regenerate the next year the way that revenue off of a tax rate does. You also can't, you know, start new programs with, with fund balance dollars, because you won't have dollars there to continue them into the future. More importantly, the city of Alexandria has a triple A bond rating, AAA slash AAA, from the rating agencies that assess us and determine how much we pay when we borrow money. And over the next 10 years, we are scheduled to borrow over $2 billion in money to build things, including a lot of school facilities that we have decided we need as a city. When they assess our, our credit worthiness, they look at a lot of our policies, and more importantly, they look at our adherence to our policies. So when we say we have a fund balance that we're going to maintain at a certain level, and even if there's monies above that that aren't encumbered by a certain use that has been defined, we're, we're not going to use them except in an absolute emergency, we have to stay to those policies. Otherwise, our, our credit rating gets hit. It's the same as if we were to overspend on the CIP, which is effectively the city's credit card. If we overspend too much, our credit rating would be hit. And just taking our credit rating down one notch to triple A, from triple A to double A, would cost the city $32 million over the next 10 years in increased interest payments on the debts that we have to take out to build the things that we, as a city, have decided we need to build. So it's not a cookie jar of money that we can break open and use, even if we think what we want to use it on is incredibly important. We have to have the discipline to say, this money is for the purposes it's encumbered for, or it's there because we have to show that we're going to maintain our fiscal house in order to get the credit rating we need to be able to do the things as a city that we want to do.
Councilman El Newby.
So on the pay issue, I think ACPS, so does school board. They have a job to ask for what they need. I totally believe that. I said it when I was a school board member, and I'm still going to say it. They have every responsibility to ask for what they need as a school board, what they think the level of funding is that they need to run the school, the school system properly. However, that doesn't mean that council can always meet that need. And once we approve a budget and send it back to them, they have a responsibility to find efficiencies and be able to do more with less, just like every city department is doing more with less this year, unfortunately. Now, last year, the city raised taxes specifically for the schools to pay teachers more, to increase teachers' pay. We increased taxes by two and, two and a half cents, right? Two and a half cents. Super majority of that went to the schools. But understanding that cannot be done every year, unfortunately. Last year, other jurisdictions, some of them did not raise taxes and did not give as big as of a, of a raise as we did. So all these proposed budgets that school boards are sending to their localities, they don't always all get funded. Last year, several other localities didn't get their, their, their budgets funded, so their teachers didn't get as high of a pay as our teachers got last year. So this year, maybe the opposite. It's going to be cyclical, it's going to be up and down. One year, we're on top, other years, other jurisdictions are on top. Next year, as was mentioned, and something I worked on a lot when I was on the school board, is collective bargaining, making sure our teachers have the right to collectively bargain. We gave them that right when I was on the school board, and now they're going to get to the negotiations. So next year, if things go well over there on that side, we are going to have to fund that as a city, which may require a tax increase. So we have to be mindful of all these, of the big picture, and be thinking about the future as well, as we look at this year's budget, because this year's really tight budget. And as was mentioned, so many other departments made so many cuts in their budgets for things that were important, but not everything can be important when you only have so much money to spend. On the question about any funds saved from the dash proposal and from not needing, you know, the amount of school buses that they need now for high school students, if we can find savings there, I mean, that's the whole point of thinking about this, this proposal, but thinking about other shared services that we can find efficiencies, because every dollar saved is a dollar for Alexandria. Every dollar saved from the school board budget is a dollar, that's essentially going to go back to them, because the schools, every year, they get an increase in their budget. The schools, the schools' budget increased about $50 million over the last five years. So they're always going to get an increase every year, so every dollar saved is just going to help us do more with this money. But that's why we need to look at other shared services. What can we, where, what areas, what staff can we share? Like there's, on the environmental side, we had that question come up in the work session a couple of weeks ago about, ACPS used to have a position that helps them find grants for like environmental things and do sustainability better. They don't have that position anymore, but they're contracting that out. That's one thing I'm interested in seeing. Well, we know, and I asked our staff, they have the capacity to help ACPS with that if ACPS is willing. ACPS needs to be willing to work with us, and we have the capacity. That's some, that's an area where we can save money, and eventually that money is going to go back to them. Health insurance, we talked about health insurance, like they have thousands of employees, we have thousands of employees. That's huge purchasing power when you're in the market purchasing insurance for your employees. If we do it together, maybe that will save us some money. That's how we should be approaching these conversations about the budget with our partners at, at ACPS. But again, it takes willingness from both sides to have that conversation, and it takes sharing, like Councilman Aguirre mentioned earlier, it takes sharing data and sharing information. So when we're asking for that information, we need to get that, so we are able to make those decisions.
I guess the last thing, I appreciate my colleagues for all they shared on this. The last thing I would just lift up is I think sometimes when we talk about the budget, it is framed as it's either ACPS's positions or it's the city's positions. It's one or the other, and it always has to be a very tense and difficult conversation. I think the reality is, though, at the end of the day, the council's responsible for looking at the fiscal health of the whole city. And in doing that, there are a number of things we are trying to balance. It is not that we don't want to be able to fund every single ask that comes, but in this situation right now, we are dealing with a lot of uncertainty, and we're dealing with a lot of things that we just don't know how to plan for right now. I think, put in context, I know different numbers have been thrown out, but when I look at our budget, between ACPS and the city, almost $51 million comes directly from the federal government. Those are grant programs that we don't know if they will still exist. If they go away, where does that money come from? We have over 29 departments that all submitted things that they feel are essential to meet the needs and services of our city. Those totaled over $12 million, and most of those we had to say no. We put in almost $6 million worth of cuts this year, and we're still continuing to look for cuts. I know in conversations I've had here, there are folks who are looking at deletes next week. We're trying to put in contingencies, because what happens if we have an economic downturn? We are daily getting emails from residents who are saying, I have lost my job, or I'm at risk of losing my job, or my spouse has lost their job. That all impacts whether or not they can pay their property taxes, but what happens if they no longer decide to live here and they move away? This all has ripple effects and implications. We're hearing from businesses who are saying, you know what, I'm a baker. You know what I use in my baking? Eggs. It costs money. Or hearing from people who are saying, I, you know, I'm worried about the tariffs and the impact on our industry. So I think we are trying to put forth a budget that has minimal impact to the services people need and want, but also recognizes this is a year where we need to be pretty cautious. I would also say too, what we pass now, there's no guarantee that we're not going to have to revisit this in October or later on to just figure out how we respond. So I just, I, I hope folks know that I don't think this has to be a conversation of an either or. This isn't a conversation of that position isn't important, or so we don't, shouldn't do that. I think it's a conversation of, in the moment we're in now, how do we provide for as many needs as we can? How do we do so in a way that is fiscally responsible? And then how do we work together across both bodies and the whole community to figure out what's the plan for the long term in a context where resources we used to depend on, we may not have the ability to anymore? Councilman Chapman.
I'll keep it super brief, so it's basically a math equation. The city is growing at a certain rate, and certain departments, certain entities, certain organizations are looking to grow at a different rate, much higher than that. And so over the course of time that I've been on council, we've talked about what that growth rate of the city is versus some of these other agencies, whether it be ACPS, whether it be WAMADA, whoever it is. We get to a place where it is tough for the city to grow past that rate and fund past that rate. And so if our growth rate, our revenue growth is 2%, and someone's asking for seven or eight, that's going to be, be a challenge after a certain time. And so we have that issue. One thing that I'll lift up is a, we used to call it a shared service, but it's not. You've probably seen either the ACPS white cars or the city white cars with the emblem on them, whether they're on the street or some, in some parking lot. To me, it doesn't make sense that both entities have these cars. I think we need to decrease the number of cars by working together. Staffs from both entities can use those cars, see what we get in terms of savings from maintenance and purchase of those cars, and use that money for something else, most likely ACPS. That's an easy thing, but I think one of the challenges is going to be having these entities work together on this issue. As we've talked about, there are some communication issues and challenges, and so I'm putting in a request to see, and I got to talk to a couple of city staff, if we can... in a request to see, and I got to talk to a couple of city staff, if we can use some of that money to incentivize this working together.
I'm going to take a couple of these, because they came directly to me. One, the mayor said that there is a task force on Mason, Vandoorne Apartments. What is being done and why are emails and concerns not being addressed or answered? So any resident who has reached out, as well as any reporter who has reached out, we have provided an update on what is going on. For those who are interested in more information, and we are happy to share this out, a couple things have happened since the story was released. First, there was an interdepartmental work group that was put together that includes code enforcement, housing, the police department, DCHS, and some representatives from ACPS. There was a couple of specific things that have been addressed immediately. There were three complaints of no heat. Both of those were, all three of those were investigated and resolved. There was a report of bathroom leaks and mold. All of those have been, violations have been issued and have been resolved. There have been, APD has conducted a review of all calls over a several month period. They have increased officer engagement on site, including regular meetings with Nova Raph, with attendance group on site. They also have foot patrols, vehicle checks, and they're even doing roll calls on site. There was another meeting with housing and several tenants, and they're going to be putting together a know your rights session, as well as working with them on how to report violations directly to staff, so that we can get out there. There's a lot more here. There were several rodent complaints that have all been reported, investigated, violations issued, and then follow-up gone out to make sure that those have been addressed, as well as some things related to trash. So the work group meets, I think, every few weeks. I'm happy to get you the timeline, but they also provide a report to council, because we believe this is unacceptable, and we want to continue checking it, so we're happy to share that out as that comes. Another question was directly to the mayor, and we're not going to be able to answer this one in this forum, but it is someone who was a federal employee and was fired, and they want to know which laws apply to them. If you could just find us afterwards, I don't know that we have specific advice on that, but we will be able to figure out maybe where's the right agency or group that you can go to for that question. Another one is, the mayor said in a May 2024 Washington Post interview that you opposed a ceasefire resolution in Gaza, and the question is, do I still oppose a ceasefire resolution? What I will say is, my position remains the same. I have, however, been engaging in conversations with grassroots Alexandria, as well as the Human Rights Coalition, related to some of the calls that have been around disinvestment. And so I know that there are some conversations we're having there, and some things that we are looking on, pursuing. Another question is, how is the mayor making sure that citizens are involved with the governing process? I can't take credit for the town halls, because that was an idea of Councilman McPike, but a couple of things that I will say that I'm adding specifically to that. This morning, had my first mayoral youth forum. We had over 25 young people. This will be every other month, with young people coming directly to the mayor and other elected officials at multiple levels of government to share their issues and concerns. I've also brought back previous mayor's interfaith and clergy council, and so that is meeting quarterly. We had our first meeting on that as well. And then hosting what I call resident roundtables in order to be able to provide another space where it's less of us talking and more of you talking, and those will be every other month as well. I also do a newsletter. I've been very clear with people, this does not look like the previous mayor's newsletter, but it is, it is a newsletter if you are seeking information in a short, bulleted fashion. And then I know a number of my colleagues also have their own sort of newsletters, podcasts, and engagements they're doing as well. And then last one was another one to the mayor, related to concerns about a pothole they got, and wants to, wants compensation. So we'll talk to you about this over here, and I will get you directed to the right city department. All right, back to our regular scheduled programming. What is going on with the Duke Street ramp at Vandoorne Street? Vice Mayor Bagley.
Oh.
I just took like six that all directly called me out. Is there somebody else?
It's not that I don't want to answer, but honestly, I mean, if Abdel's throwing his hand up, I'm happy to, like, yeah.
I just to start, because I engaged with a resident about the changes that are happening all the time over there, because there's the question earlier, the landmark development, there's a hospital being built there. So there are a lot of changes to the traffic pattern, that they are all temporary, and the city puts out communications about it, but sometimes people don't get the communication, and they don't understand why, you know, you're shutting down a lane, or you're shutting down a right turn, or a left turn, or a ramp. Yes, there is a ramp that's closed, was a bit closed for a while because of that development that's happening, and there's heavy construction there. We're building multi-million or 100, multi-hundred millions of dollars a hospital there, so it's big development. If you have any concerns, or don't know what's happening, have questions, just feel free to reach out. Again, our staff has been very, they sent out like really detailed emails that I've seen to the residents who asked questions about that specific intersection over there, because yes, it could create a choke point at points and disrupt traffic.
Just to, and, yeah, thank you. I mean, it's, and, I'm sorry, the reason I kind of went oof is because I know, I mean, it's a challenging process, and that was what my oof was a reaction to, but I can give something a little more concrete in terms of like a verbalized answer. So yes, starting in December and carrying through August, there is a rotating set of closures involving the ramp and the street at Vandoorne and Duke, and this is directly related to really what is now the infrastructure work happening at that, at that area. That's why you're not really seeing up development happen yet, but there's a lot of down development happening. Is that, I mean, is that the very layperson way to put it? So the closures are, it's going to continue through August. One of the best sources, actually, and I want to shout out to Vernon, there's a good ALX Now story that breaks down, you know, this phase will involve this way closed, this phase will involve that way closed. So if you Google, you know, Vandoorne, Duke Street, ALX Now, Vernon's article will come up from December. But, you know, I appreciate everyone's patience. We will continue to strive to communicate, you know. There are likely e-news blasts that you can sign up related to that parcel that will update you directly. I know I'm on the e-news blast for anything that happens at the power plant and things in my neighborhood, but do expect sort of significant, you know, delays and plan accordingly there. But it really is for an exciting kind of future, not just the hospital, not just the housing, but there's going to be a significant transit center there as well, a real hub for buses moving through the city. So hopefully, it will be worth it. I mean, we are asking for your patience, and we understand the inconvenience, but it's worth it.
Okay, so all that's left is a big stack of other, infrastructure, zoning, and like two more budget questions.
And Yon has more.
That's okay. That's okay. Keep it going. We're going to get, we're going to get to everybody's. Okay. We got public safety, budget, budget. Okay. Schools. Okay. I did want to correct one thing on the town halls. I forgot to give credit to Councilman Aguirre, because this is something I know he has been working on since 2018. So collective effort to try and find more ways to engage with the public. So next question, and I'm going to try, guys, we only have like 30 minutes, so let's, shorter answers. Councilman Chapman, this one's coming to you. Should residents expect a increase this year in their property taxes?
No.
It is, but I guess technically, due to, yeah, there's no tax increase, but some people will see increased payments because of the appreciation on their home. Okay. This one is specifically about fences, and that the rules are draconian. Hold on, let me see if there's a question. Is council willing to undertake a comprehensive review of the city's residential building regulations with an eye towards streamlining and simplifying requirements to allow homeowners to make improvements on their private property? Vice Mayor Bagley.
So we did just do some changes on our sign ordinance, which is mostly related to business, but I lift that up because it was a recognition from like the last couple of councils of like, this is too complicated, this is costing businesses money to have to come in before us. We also just made some changes with regard to fences, actually, between homes that are, that abut businesses, so where like there's two different rules that applied, one on the business side and one on the residential side. So we have addressed that. There's also been several council actions in the last few meetings on something called the One Start, One Start? Did I just?
Yeah.
It sounded funny when I said it out loud.
One Start.
One Start, yeah. So One Start is a streamlining of our permitting and our development process that has, is underway. So as to the specifics of the question, and I can see that it was very long and double-sided, I can't, I don't want to commit, but I, what I can say is, this council and the prior council before it are very actively working on ways to streamline and simplify and make things faster and easier to reduce the legal fees, the permitting fees, and just the time that goes into things, because those do end up actually in your housing costs, I mean, for better or worse, you know, in whether you're a renter or you're an owner, they all raise the cost of your housing.
Okay. I'm going to, gas-powered leaf blowers. Councilwoman Green, this one's coming to you. Will you support a short phase-in period of a ban on these machines of no more than one year?
So I like to tell the story that on the campaign trail, like, one of the top three issues that I heard knocking doors was about, about gas leaf blowers. And we have heard you loudly, very clearly, and we...
Or maybe we haven't heard you. I was making a leaf blower joke, sorry.
Oh, okay. Yes, we haven't heard you because of the leaf blower noise. But yes, so we're in the process of that. I actually do support it being more streamlined and not taking as long of a process, so I do support that, but I think we have already voted to move forward with the process that it is now, and correctly, I think it's 24 months.
So we, we don't have an ordinance before us just yet, but it will be coming in May.
In May, and we, yeah, we have discussed the two years. I know that was discussed, as well as maybe moving it faster. But yes, I do support that. Thank you.
Councilman Aguirre, is it safe in Alexandria to voice an opinion differing from the city council and the city government?
Absolutely, happens all the time. And even with this council, we've had issues, well, not issues, we've had disagreements where it might be a 6-1 vote, it might be a 4-3 vote, it might be a 5-2 vote, so yes, you absolutely can make your voice heard if you don't agree with something.
Councilman McPike, the timing of our local elections, that we do not have staggered voting for council members, and that we are a rare example of a fully-at-large voting all result in a political system in Alexandria that seems increasingly undemocratic. Even if this is not your personal political self-interest, are you willing to study this system, and are you open to changes if citizens and civic groups believe those changes will improve how representative our government really is?
So I am actually very open to considering changes such as term lengths in our city. We're the only jurisdiction in this area that has three-year terms, which means that our elections float amongst the various different elections that you have in Virginia, and you have highly variable turnout from cycle to cycle. And if we were to extend the terms, I do think that looking at staggered terms would be something that is worth considering, having the mayor and three council members up at one year, and then two years later, three council members up. I'm sort of, I've been having some conversations with folks about that. Oftentimes, we hear questions about wards, and I do not support wards, because I think wards have proven very detrimental to the operation of some of our neighboring jurisdictions. But more importantly, they prove very detrimental to the operating of the city of Alexandria. If you look back to our city's history, when Delray was admitted into the city, a ward system was created. And Alexandria, we excel at everything, including maximizing all the negativities that you can have from a ward system as fast as humanly possible. We had a situation evolve where the city was wildly over budget, where wards became fiefdoms, where each individual council member basically had the full run of the show, where the city budget became very, very difficult for the city manager to handle. And it was Armistead Booth, whom we have a park named after in our city, who was Alexandria's progressive, heroic, anti-bird machine representative to the House of Delegates, who filed the charter amendments to move us out of the ward system and back to what we have today. Today, you have a city council where if you are a person who lives in Delray, and you care about the businesses along Mount Vernon, you care about schools, you care about flooding that is impacting your neighborhood, you have seven people in the city council who you can reach out to. You aren't restricted to simply the person that represents you, and if the person who represents you doesn't particularly care about your issue, you're going to have a hard time getting any traction on it. We're a city that is small, but often has big issues. And if we look at the flooding that affects certain parts of Alexandria, we're spending over $1 billion over the course of a decade to address that. And if we had a ward system, the only two people that would vote to spend $1 billion over the decade to fix flooding in a certain area of the city would maybe be the mayor and the person who represents that specific neighborhood. But because we all represent the entirety of the city, we had to stand up and say, we cannot let the residents we represent deal with this hardship. So I think that the ward system is not a good fit for Alexandria and the challenges that we face. I think that our current system has elected some of the most diverse geographically, racially, you know, councils in the history of our city, and we should be very proud of that. But in terms of terms, in terms of other adjustments we can make to our election system, I am very open to that, and I'm happy to have those conversations.
It seems, Councilman Alnuvi, I'm going to send this to you. It seems the relationship between the community and council has become strained, accompanied by complaints that the council is not open to community input, and that you've already made up your mind. Assuming you recognize the validity of this perception, what will the new council do to ameliorate it?
I don't necessarily agree with that. I would love to hear about specific situation and how your experience went, and happy to talk about it. I just can't tell you, like, this council, and from what I've seen from my colleagues, and based on my previous experience, like, things here are very open to conversation. People here are very willing. Let me just, let me tell you something, just, I'm going to speak from the heart, right? Seriously. Since I came to council, I really, the kind of commitment that I've seen from our city staff is just amazing. It has been really, for me, a breath of fresh air. Our staff are really committed to making the city work for you. This is the kind of government that I ran for office to see and to want to see happen, and it does happen, I would say. That's why we have a great quality of life in our city, whether it's filling potholes or graffiti. Every time I reach out to our staff to ask them to look into something, or to talk to a resident about something, they engage in good faith, they answer questions, they solve the problem in a timely manner, they stay after it. I just, honestly, I'm telling you, I can't ask for a better staff that we have that supports us. They care a lot about council making the right decision, and about council engaging with the public. They bring us the information that helps us make the right decision. They're not trying to drive us towards making a certain decision. They actually care about us making the right decision, that we think is the right decision, not what they think is the right decision. All they care about is giving us the correct information to make these decisions, because that's how government's supposed to work. We work for you, you hold us accountable. Staff works for us, we hold them accountable. And I'm telling you, it's been refreshing being here on council and seeing that actually happened in your city, and I think every one of our residents should be proud that this is how our city government is functioning. In terms of engagement, again, we have, you know, town halls, and if you have any ideas, I think we're open to listening to your ideas. How can we engage better? If there's a certain, again, I would like to hear about a certain situation where you think, because, listen, we, everyone makes mistakes, so maybe there's a situation where you may not, you may not have been satisfied about how the public engagement went on it. But for example, like the leaf blower example that just, we just talked about, when it came to council, we told staff, go engage with the community, go engage with the small businesses, find out what are the unintended consequences of such decision, and if we thought about all of it, we thought about the big picture, and come back to us, right? If they come back to us to make a decision, and we don't think we have enough information, we push them, we send them back to bring us more information, we don't get any pushback, they happily do it, because again, they care about us making the right decision for you. I'm happy to talk more offline, but more details if anyone's interested. But again, if you have any suggestions of how we can do engagement better, please come talk to us and tell us, and we're always happy to listen. And again, from what I've seen from my colleagues, they really value public input, really value people's opinion. We can agree to disagree, but, you know, we're never going to yell at anyone, or like, you know, have issues with anyone, because this is how our government's supposed to work. And as someone who, on a personal note, grew up in a dictatorship, where you can't even do that, you know, you can't even have signs that go against, you know, the opinion of people in power, or any of that, I'm very proud to live in this city.
Councilman Aguirre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I agree with my colleague, and I'd even... So I, I agree with my colleague, and I'd even, you know, went to highlight that the city really has changed the way that it does engagement, you know, doing pop-ups at lounges, at bus stops, at grocery stores. We never used to do that type of stuff before. We are engaging different populations within our city that we honestly didn't engage before. A short anecdote, I, I don't know how many people know about the co-op that we have. We only have one co-op, at one point was the largest on the East Coast, the Orlando Tidala W housing cooperative. I went there in 2018 when I ran for the first time, and I asked them, when's the last time somebody from council or a candidate has come to see you? They looked around the room, they said, we can't remember. It probably wasn't since the co-op was first formed. So that's one example. Another example, African Communities Together, which is right across the street from here at Southern Towers, another group that wasn't engaged before, we're engaged with them. Nova Raft, which deals with Afghan refugees, you know, they came together, we've been engaging them, and we've been making things happen, right? This council takes this very seriously when we talk about engagement, and we've been doing just that. We've been putting where our money, where our mouth is, we've increased the size of our Office of Community Engagement, we've increased the positions specifically for engagement, we have folks in the Health Department that are doing similar things, we are doing these town halls, we're getting out into the public all across the city.
This is just to follow up on that, we did receive a comment that said, would you consider allowing constituents to verbalize their own questions, and having a real discussion with them, rather than picking up and choosing which questions get answered? The current format does not allow people to speak, and it's not really a town hall. So I'll say a couple things. One, we are gonna get to every single question that is asked. We only have about 10 more, so it's not a picking and choosing. Second, the reason why this format was suggested was because we want to be able to get to as many as possible. I can tell you, some of these note cards are not just double-sided, but they're multiple note cards for one question. We would still, so, I just say that in good faith, and that it's not from a censor, it's, there's a lot of people in our city with a lot of different opinions, and we're trying to get through as many as possible. I'd also say to Councilman Aguirre's point, this isn't the only engagement. So there are other ones, like I mentioned, our round tables or other things, where it is a two-way dialogue, where we want to be problem-solving. So we're open to feedback, but I would just also lift up that every engagement is not structured the same way. And so if you're looking for one that is more of a back-and-forth, then let's figure out how we structure that and how we do that. But in this case, the goal was, people want to ask questions, we want to get through them. But we're gonna get through all of them, so we will keep going. Next question, I think I answered this, but I will open it up for the whole council. Alexandria's Human Rights Commission sent a formal recommendation to the city council in March of 2024, calling on council to pass a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. They then sent a follow-up letter on January 2025, and then in March 2025, they sent another recommendation, calling for the city council to divest from companies enabling Israel's genocide. What is the city council's position on both issues? Councilman Aguirre.
First of all, jumping back to the last question really fast, every single one of us are willing to meet one-on-one, so if anybody wants to have a meeting one-on-one, just contact us, we're willing to do that. Specifically to this question, all of our boards and commissions are advisory. Nothing is binding. It is up to the council to decide whether to take something out or not on advisement from any of our boards and commissions.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I would just add, I have talked directly to our Human Rights Commission Chair on this topic. I have also met with representatives, I mean, of, there are various coalitions on this issue, but I have met with, I know, representatives from grassroots Alexandria and some of their other partners. So it is not that the issue is not being discussed, examined, considered, it's just like gas leaf blowers, just like, you know, a bunch of other issues, you know, like, it's when it's timely, when there is something towards consensus, when there is direction for staff to give.
Will the city council be able to stop the sheriff from holding undocumented individuals for an extra eight hours to allow ICE to detain them? Vice Mayor Bagley.
I mean, the short answer on this is, the sheriff is an independent elected office, and so, and that's not a dodge, that's, that's the reality. So we can express ourselves individually or as a body to the sheriff, but that's not a policy we can dictate. Sheriff Casey is running for office right now, he is available publicly all over town all the time. I would encourage you to express, you know, if you have concerns in this area, to express them to him. He is ready and informed to address this topic. I hope that's a responsive.
Councilman Chapman, if unions cost the city so much money and create budget challenges, why did you vote for unions and collective bargaining?
Because I think for, if we look at pay and whether it be school pay, whether it be employee compensation, we are always going to be in a fight with other jurisdictions for people and for pay, pay quality, shall we say. I think one of the ways to best work to get not just quality pay, but an expected understanding of what pay is going to be, is to look at collective bargaining, because you're setting up a contract for a number of years, and so you, you understand at the beginning of that contract where that pay is going for the duration of that contract. And so the city is, is going to know, as it does those contracts with different employee groups, how much it's going to cost. And within our negotiating, negotiating and bargaining, there are, there are situations where if a package is too much for the city to actually be able to handle, and the city can show that, there is an opportunity for renegotiation. And that is the structure of our collective bargaining, and so that's an opportunity as well.
I'm gonna have Councilman McPike, Councilman Al Newby, and then I have a comment on this one, too.
Yeah, I appreciate John's comments, he's exactly right. Collective bargaining provides a structure and a sort of a look ahead. It also, you know, we talked earlier about whether the things we're investing in, do we see the return on them? And we've seen the return on these collective bargaining agreements, they've been very good for our city. We're about to be at full strength with our fire department. We have a police department where morale has improved and turnover has decreased. We are seeing, you know, good things come from this, but fundamentally, I think what we're seeing is our city is operating in a way that reflects the fact that we believe that workers have a right to organize and to bargain collectively, and if that is a right that they have, that is a right that they should have here in this city as they work and bargain with us as an entity.
So collective bargaining is a way to give workers, because we care about workers, at least I care, I mean, I know this council cares about workers, and that, you know, collective bargaining speaks for that, because we should care about our working people. Our workers are part of our community, and we want to have, we want them to have a say, collective bargaining gives them a say, gives them a little bit of leverage, a say in their pay, in their benefits, and in their working conditions. Because we also want to attract the best to our city, so that enables us to have that. We don't want to be paying starvation wages, because that, that, at the end of the day, one, we're not gonna be able to attract good talent, but two, you're gonna pay for it either way. If we're paying starvation wages, then we're gonna have to pay for, for aid and for, for in other, in other sorts of government assistance. So that's why collective bargaining is important, and is critical and helpful to, to our, to the health of our workforce.
I was just gonna say, for me, I think I've been very clear with everyone, and will continue to be, that a strong value of mine, and I think for our city and many of the residents I talk to, is supporting working families. I think at the end of the day, that's not something to be ashamed of, or it shouldn't be something to fight over. I can tell you, when I first joined the city council, I wasn't really aware of all the things that come in a collective bargaining agreement. What I was aware of is that I heard from our police, our firefighters, our trades, our administrative professionals, our teachers, that they have not received the pay and compensation they need, that they want to be able to stay and work in Alexandria, but it's becoming increasingly harder to do so. And just like everyone else, they want to have a voice in the conditions where they work. And so to me, it's critical to be able to do that. I also think we have a fiscal responsibility to make sure that the projects we're building and the things we're doing, that they are built right, they are built with high quality, and they benefit more Alexandrians. And part of that is making sure we have jobs that pay good wages to do that. So for me, I think this is really important. I also think that is why, I, I don't think the frame that it's costing us so much money, I think it's one component of the many different budget things that we have to look at, but I think investing in people should never be something we shortchange. Councilman Aguirre.
I agree with everything that my colleagues have said, absolutely, and I also fundamentally believe that workers deserve a voice in the workplace. You know, that's full stop right there. Secondly, it has been a huge retention thing, having collective bargaining. If you were to go to ask any of the firefighters or police officers if they would be willing to get rid of collective bargaining, I almost guarantee you, or getting rid of their union, I almost guarantee you they will 100% say no. And lastly, just on a personal note, my mother was a teacher back home in LA, she was part of UTLA, United Teachers of Los Angeles, which was a union, the teachers' union there, and I know that because of that, we were able to buy a car, we were able to buy a home, and I was able to go to school.
So there are three here that I think we answered earlier, and I will direct them back to the city attorney, but there is a question about why did the city hire McGuire Woods Law Firm on taxpayer dollars, and this is a response to zoning for housing. There was another one about how and why is the city demanding, and this is in reference to the subpoena, citizens' correspondence, and is that consistent with our values? And then there was another one around, are the city subpoenas of citizens' emails a form of intimidation and retribution? As I mentioned, council's not gonna comment on this, but we did, we, our city attorney is back there. If you have further questions or comments that need clarified, happy to point you in that direction. Last week, a couple miles north in Roslyn, ICE unlawfully detained Badr Khansari for expressing sol, sorry, solidarity with the Palestinian people. What is the city doing to resist the Trump administration's attack on human rights? And will this include divesting city funds from Israel's apartheid and genocide? Councilman McPike.
So the freedom of speech is fundamental in this country. Every single person, whether you are a citizen, you know, a permanent resident, a tourist in this city, in this, in this country, you have a right to free speech, you have a right to due process, and this current administration's actions fly in complete face of that. It is a complete abrogation of the responsibility of these federal officials to uphold the United States Constitution, for them to persecute anyone based upon the content of their speech. The city has put together resources to help folks who are potentially subject to detainment or deportation, a lot of things that we're not gonna go into detail about in a public forum, but there are resources on our city's website, there are resources the city is funding through Legal Aid Services. If you are a person in Alexandria, you are a part of our community, and you are concerned that these federal actions may impact you or your family directly, please be in touch with folks who can give you the guidance that you need to ensure that you are secure and safe in your, in your place in our city. Regarding divestment, I believe that the mayor spoke to that. It is not something that I am personally in favor of, because I think that our city's fiscal position puts us in a place that we need to be sure that we are handling our money in the most, you know, fiscally responsible way. And in terms of free speech, a lot of the investments we have in the city are employee-driven, and I'm not going to support a policy that tells employees where they can and cannot invest their own retirement funds.
Just while we're on this, I just want to open it up, if anyone wants to comment, because there are three more of the exact same question, which are around sort of your response to the Human Rights Commission, your position on ceasefire and divestment. So just, so folks know. Vice Mayor Bagley.
So I, for the sake of those who, just so they can be repeated often, one of the ways that we are sort of resisting or not, you know, cooperating is, you know, our police department is not a part of deportation actions or, you know, in, into people's homes, into people's community. So I want the community here and anybody watching to know that, you know, if you, if you are concerned about being the victim of a crime, if you need to contact the police, please do so. We got a separate question on the sheriff, and that is a very separate issue about what is going on in terms of what somebody arrives at the jail. But in terms of our local police, this council and our police and our values is, you know, our police are here to support our citizens, to create a safe environment for our citizens. I understand that it can be confusing to, to tell the difference sometimes between an ICE officer, between a police officer, between a sheriff, so please reach out, and those respective offices are Atlanta, are Alexandria, police and sheriff will come to communities, you know, if I'm looking over at our liaison in the back there, but they will come into a community, they will talk about, this is what our, this is what our uniform looks like, you know, these are things you will not see us doing. So to me, that is part of sort of free speech. The other, the other thing I'll say is, there are people here with signs right now expressing themselves freely in opaleen, nobody's pushing them out of the room. The same thing happens at our council meeting. We have people come to our meetings and express themselves in opposition, you know, to, to many of the point of views we've expressed today. So, you know, please come in, you know, we are trying to model what open free speech looks like as much as possible in our town halls, by being here today, in our city council chambers, and, and we want to keep doing so. But I, I didn't want to let pass the idea that you can't rely on the police if you need them right now in our city.
Okay. Councilman Al Newby had a hand up. Do, there's 10 minutes and eight questions, so I want to get to everybody's.
So on the divestment and the ceasefire, I personally want to see a ceasefire in Gaza. Of course I want to see a ceasefire. I don't think I want to see more kids being killed, but do I think if city council passes ceasefire, it's gonna make a difference? Probably not. Would I vote for it, it's put on the floor? Yes. Am I gonna spend my time working on it? No, because I'd rather spend my time trying to find funds for housing, for school, trying to show our value as a community in how we've helped the most vulnerable among us in the community, but also make sure free speech is protected, which it is. I welcome free speech, I welcome you to, to oppose us and to bring your, your views, because, look, I mean, you, you believe in an issue, I invite you to speak up for it and keep speaking up for it, because it's an important issue for you, and we all have a role to play. But for me, right now, I want to be spending my time, you got, I gotta tell you, like, this job takes, this is a part-time job for us, but it takes so much more than part-time. And we are trying, I'm personally trying to be as effective as I can for the local issues that I ran on, that I want to fix, that I have control over. I mean, if we pass a ceasefire resolution, is Trump really gonna listen to us? I mean, our congressman already called for ceasefire, so I don't know if that's gonna even like, change our congressman's views. So, but yes, I do certainly want to see it, but that's not why I ran for local office to do, and to, you know, try to make a difference in an issue like that over there, because it's just bigger than a city council.
Okay. If the city is trying to be fiscally conservative, why give a 3% increase to city staff, but give ACPS 1%? Councilman Chapman.
So I appreciate the question, but the framework of how a locality like ours gives the schools money is in a lump sum. We do not designate how much money we can give for any part of their budget. We have to give that in a whole lump sum, and what that, what school board does with that lump sum is, is their choice. And so if schools want to, school board, the elected school board members that you've chosen, want to give their staff a 1% MRA versus a 2, that means they have chosen to prioritize that versus try to find funding within that lump sum. I think the, the question of, can council give more of a lump sum so that they can easier, make that an easier decision, is probably the, the right question there, but in terms of us giving them a 1% MRA, that's not what we do. We focus on what our staff's, and legally, we can't do that. So, yeah, let me, I think.
Vice Mayor Bagley.
Just, so, page 10.1, in our, in our FY26 proposed budget, is a nice one-page snapshot on how we're handling salary adjustments and recognizing, you know, time limitation, I would love to point people to that, but there's a proposed 1% citywide cost of living adjustment to non-collectively bargained pay scales. So there's some great facts on that one page about what's happening on the city side, and I think my colleagues done a really great job of explaining what control we have over the specifics on the ACPS side.
Okay, a couple more. I had one that was about my previous employer, the Melville Charitable Trust. It asked, how many funds were received from HHS, HUD, DOJ, or DHS? And the answer is zero. It's a foundation, so the money comes from its endowment. And I also don't work there anymore. The next question, why can, why can't the Homes Run Trail be restored before the end of 2025?
Oh, well, oh, sorry.
Sure, Vice Mayor Bagley. Vice Mayor Bagley.
Did I, did I want to jump on people? I. Time. There, but I, I just would remind everybody, original washout, plans to fix it, bigger washout, begun plans to fix it, COVID happened, nobody was doing any work in building things. We are currently building. There are literally pile driving happening out on the trail, and portions of the trail, there's a great dedicated page on the city website. I, I am cautiously optimistic that it will, it will reopen this year in significant portions, i- if not all of it. And maybe I should just stop there, but it, yeah.
I think that's correct, but we too are committed to getting this back open. We recognize it's been long and frustrating. Councilwoman Green, positions in the city are not equivalent to teaching positions. With enrollment, enrollment going up, what does council recommend then to keep ACPS class sizes manageable, given our large multilingual, multilingualistic, high-need population?
I think class sizes, our class sizes, we, we actually, we're, it's set at a certain level at ACPS. They would have to change that within, you know, within their policies in order to have class sizes smaller. It is hard right now, and I served on the, on the school board for six years, so I have two terms. I have heard all of the comment, all, you know, met with many people, and we have heard loudly that we need to do something and do something very quickly about our class sizes. It is very important that the system be looking at that at all times. If there, you know, if there's any room for, if there's any reserved positions, you know, potentially if, you know, a grade level is higher than another grade level, it's always looked at, you know, potentially with reserved positions as well. So there are always things that can be done and be looked at to manage that school by school, principal by principal, and, and as central office works with them.
Councilman McPike, what evidence is there that increasing multifamily buildings in Alexandria yields, it just says yields rents and sales prices?
So Alexandria is not the only city in the country facing a housing crisis. It's, a challenge is not occurring everywhere in America, but it is one that is very common. And if you were to look at the policies in place, just writ large across the country, the places where it is easier to build housing are seeing lower housing costs, lower rent increases across the board. It is also true that we only have limited effects on the market. We can't subsidize everyone's rent enough to make housing affordable. We can't build enough public housing to provide a home for everyone who needs one in the city. So we have to work within the market. And we've seen in other places, Austin, Texas is an excellent example, where they unlocked their housing market. They removed a lot of the restrictions they had on the type of housing that could be built, the scale of housing that could be built. And they have actually seen not only a slowing of rents, increases, they've seen a drop in rents in the city of Austin, Texas, a city that its population continues to grow rapidly. It is a supply and demand challenge. The demand is there, the demand is overwhelming in this area and in other parts of the country for housing. People want to live in Alexandria and in this region for the jobs that we have, for the culture that we have, for the community that we have built. And if we don't build housing at a rate that accommodates the pressure of demand that exists, the people who want to live here, who have more money than the people who live here already, are going to push rents up, outbid people for housing, and displace members of our community whom we value, whom we rely upon, whom we do not want to see leave. The tools that we have are limited, but they can be powerful. If we unlock the ability to create housing, if we meet the market demand with supply, as Austin has done, as you've seen happen in Minneapolis, as you've seen happen in many states that didn't restrict housing as aggressively as frankly, most blue states did in this country, we know that this can work. Now, we want to do it carefully, and we want to do it thoughtfully. That's why with zoning for housing, we took some limited steps to address this. And we want to measure how those steps affect our housing market before we go forward blindly into other things. We want to handle this in a way that fits the best Alexandria, you know, traditions of engagement and involvement of public input. We want to do this in a way that reflects the character of our city and our desire to protect things, like our old town historic district. But we need to do it because so many of our neighbors are clinging to their place in this city by their fingertips. They know that that next rent increase could be the one that drives them out of their home, their kids out of the only school they've ever been to. And if we want to live out our values as a city, we need to be looking at our laws and ask ourselves, what are we doing that has made it so hard to build housing in the city that we are losing people that we care about? And how do we fix that?
Thank you. Councilman Aguirre, Capital Bike Share has designated parts of the West End, around the nature center, for example, as their out-of-service area. What can be done so that the city can encourage Bike Share to serve all residents equally?
I think it's having a conversation with Capital Bike Share, making sure that we're committed to equity in the city. As the city has doubled down on that, we're not afraid to say it, we're not afraid to implement it and to work on it. You know, when we were talking about scooters in the city, Councilman Seifaldin and I were the major pushers to make sure that there were equity emphasis areas in the city where we would make sure that last mile and options for, for other, other means of travel were available. And we did that successfully because when we started putting some of the scooters in Chirilawa in the West End, there was high usage of them. So it's similar with, with Capital Bike Share. We've definitely been trying to expand it. There is some, some financial stuff behind it that we need to be aware of, but, you know, we, we will continue to look to where we can place Capital Bike Share stalls, because the other thing that it helps with too, is visibility for pedestrians, because at certain intersections, that helps us to open it up so that you could actually see vehicles that are coming and pedestrians that are trying to cross. Good example of that is right on Taney, Taney and Howard Street, where I actually advocated to put a Capital Bike Share for several years to help with that intersection.
Okay, a few more. So there was two here, again, related to fully funding ACPS and staffing. I think we've covered that in a couple of different ways. I just will leave one other piece. When the manager does his budget, they kind of start with, like, let me back up. One, if you look at any of our budgets, we actually do multi-year budgeting. So if you ever, if somebody ever says, well, how do we predict, or how do we look at the next year? There's an entire section in the front that maps out multiple years, to help us understand what are the things we're committed to and kind of what are our projections coming in. Based on that, the manager starts with kind of what are the core services we have to provide, and how do we fund those? Then we look at, is there any new money coming in? In this year's budget, there was about $30 million of quote-unquote "new" money. We started right off the top and said about $10 million of that, we're sending to ACPS. So I just want to start there because I want people to know this, again, this isn't an either-or. Our residents, our children are not like extra residents, they are residents of the city, and we start with them as a priority. Then from there, they look at sort of, what else are we fully committed to that we have to pay? And if we continue to pay, we'll help position the city in a better place moving forward. So then they took about another $10 million and put that to our cash capital and our debt service. We can't do new projects if we're not paying down the projects we already have. And so then we're left with, okay, what are the other agreements that we have? So our collective bargaining, what are things that have increased cost prices? So for example, the state has now mandated that our firefighters can no longer receive medications from Inova. We have to build pharmacies. That costs money to do that, so we have to pay for some of those things. After that, there was about $4 million left. So I just, I just want to say, as we're thinking about this puzzle, we are starting with ACPS. I know people have answered these questions in many different ways, but I think what I have heard is, what we are committed to is our transfer, and that transfer is an increase, and it is higher than I think we initially anticipated when you look at that multi-year budgeting, and we have tried to put as much as we can to that. We'll see what happens in add deletes, but I think that's kind of just the fiscal state we're in. There was another question related to dash. Several of these were covered earlier, but it was, how do you implement safety using dash bus for our students? How do you protect our students? Is there any training to dash bus drivers? And are there policy updates? So a couple of things I will say, just again, the overall process, all of the presentations can be found on the website. Last month's presentation was just on safety, and it walked through what is the training that dash bus drivers receive compared to ACPS bus drivers? Something I thought was interesting, dash bus drivers actually receive training in youth de-escalation. They also receive training related to many other components of how to deal with young people. There were questions about cameras. There are more cameras on a dash bus than there are on a city bus. So there were a lot, sorry, on a school bus. There were a lot of sort of breakdown on that. So I would encourage anybody to go through those presentations. There will be more. We're also cataloging every question that we've received, when it was answered, and the PowerPoints that it were in, so that you can see in a transparent way how that's being considered. And lastly, I would just say on the safety piece, and it's sitting with me, I had my first youth forum this morning, and we did a breakout group, and there was one that focused on transportation. And there was John Junior, and he said, I've been riding the bus for a long time. Nobody ever asked me if I was safe, and I don't understand why now they are. And I think that is an important part of the conversation too, that we actually have to get to our young people and understand their experiences. When we did the safety presentations, there were less incidents involving youth on a dash bus than there has been on the school bus. So this is all, it meant to be a data and information and a learning journey. There's no decision being made right now, but that's the type of information we need in order to figure this out. And what I've said to people too is, it doesn't have to be based on the current system. If there's a type of training we would want our bus drivers to have, then the question we should be asking is, what is the training we want them to have, and how do you implement that effectively? So I would just say, more to come. All the city schools' meetings are open. Eventually, I think part of what we said was, it has to be presented to both bodies, so there will also be a work session, and there'll be community engagement on that as well. Last question, I'm going to send, I feel like, I was trying to keep tallies, but the last time it didn't work. So I'm going to send it to Councilwoman El Newby, because I feel like I haven't heard you in a while. So this one is, what is the city doing to prepare for a downturn in revenue? Other jurisdictions are actively examining and adjusting for unexpected harm to the economy, AKA less grant money, et cetera. Which services and projects would be cut here? What is the city doing to ensure FY26, which starts in three months, isn't a financial disaster? And do you have, does the city have a process for a mid-year course correction or spending reduction? So I know that's three questions and the last question, but that one's all yours.
So our, so we have an interdepartmental work group composed of staff. They're monitoring the situation on the federal level and always trying to adapt. That's one. The other thing, we set aside emergency funds in this budget in anticipation of any downturn. Like, it may not be enough, because at the end of the day, our money is finite in the city. We also made lots of cuts in this budget. I believe it was in the tune of seven?
Six million.
Six million? Six, so we made a lot of cuts in the current budget that we have, in also anticipation to that. So we don't have to raise taxes, which we're not doing. So we don't have to burden our residents in times of uncertainty. So this budget that you see already has a lot of cuts to it, so we can anticipate it. So we, in this time, so we're not overspending. We, again, there's, there are resources for federal workers that we have, a whole website, and there were events that were put together. So we're just, our staff are every day monitoring the situation as it evolves right now. Then we'll see what happens. Unfortunately, again, I, I don't, I don't want to overpromise, I mean, we received $51 million from the federal government. If all of them go away, we, I don't think we can plug a hole that big. So I also want to manage expectations.
So to kind of put everything in context, if we are on the darkest timeline and horrible things lie ahead, the way this would hit the city would kind of be in three phases in terms of our revenues. The first would be the pulling of federal grants, the cancellation of grants. We're seeing that happen, the Virginia Health Department, some of the money that they were promised through the COVID programs is being pulled away or, you know, clawed back. We may see that, and the manager has put money in the budget, as Councilman El Newby said, to be a cushion against that. The second impact we might see is on our use taxes, our sales taxes, our meals taxes. If people in our community are losing their jobs and, or cutting back because they're not certain about their long-term financial stability, that's where we're going to see it, is in decreased sales at our retail stores, restaurants, places like that. There is money in the budget to be an emergency cushion in the case that we start to see a shortfall there. Again, it's limited, but it does exist. The bulk of the city's revenue come from our real estate property taxes, and we know today, right now, what that budget will be for fiscal year 2026, because the property values were determined on January 1, and the tax rate is going to be flat because we did not advertise an increase. So we know what those revenues are going to be. So in terms of this year's budget, that is not money that we are having to dramatically, you know, claw back or, or assume will fall back as we make our plans. But next year could be a very different story. Next year will be the year that we see what's happened to our local real estate market. Are people losing their jobs and leaving the city, causing a glut of housing to come onto the market, lowering sales prices, which could lower assessments or, or just flatline our assessments? And that could be a real challenge. Even flat assessments would be a real challenge for the city, because to provide the same services that we are providing this year will cost more next year because of inflation, because of increases in costs, because of tariffs that are being applied and unapplied within hours at the federal level, it seems. So there's a lot of uncertainty in the fiscal year 2027 budget about that huge portion of our revenues. If we do see a, a shortfall that is beyond what the manager has prepared for, and he and the staff have done a lot of work to prepare thoughtfully for that, we can reopen the budget at a certain point in time and make adjustments to it. We very much hope that we will not have to do that, because we will not be finding a magic pot of gold and coming back and opening up the budget to increase spending on things that we care about, like our schools, our housing, public safety. But we do have that authority if we need it, and we hope we do not have to use it.
So we thank you for coming out this Saturday. I hope that it was informative. We did get through everyone's questions, but I'm sure there are also many more. As was mentioned on 311, you can email all of us, you can reach out, set up meetings. I think some of us may even stay a little bit after, but thank you for your time.